...work session, roll call.
Mayor Wilson. Vice Mayor Rizzi.
President.
Councilmember Biggs.
President.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Gremel.
Here.
Councilmember Nessar.
Present.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Here.
You have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Resolution number 21-42, Discussion on Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City and Maricopa County. Shane?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers. Good beautiful Arizona Monday evening. Thank you, Matt, for bringing up the presentation. Again, my name is Shane Kiesel, Public Works Manager, so I'm going to be talking to you about an item here tonight that we've been working on for many years, I guess, with the county. Started with Pinellas County a few years ago, and hopefully we'll be finishing up tonight or tomorrow night with this item on consent. So we'll get right into it here. So again, tonight this item is just for presentation and discussion of entering into a resolution which will pave the way to get into an IGA with Maricopa County for exchange of services. That's their term, fancy term for street maintenance agreement. That's essentially what this IGA is about, and its term is about 10 years, just like the one we've done in the past with Pinellas County. And it is for consideration tomorrow night, so not, so just for discussion, and then it'll be on consent for tomorrow night, if all is good. So background, again, as I mentioned, this is a two-part effort. We work with two counties with maintaining some shared streets, and these are usually border streets. With the county, Pinellas County, we have Pinellas County Islands within the city that we have some shared streets. And then with McDott, we have Meridian Drive, or what they call is Meridian Road, as well as a portion of Baseline, that are the two roadways that would be subject to this IGA. And what it would do is cover these scalloped streets, and I'll give you an example in a minute what a scalloped street, what we call it, is. And it would cover just routine and regular maintenance. And the reason for that is, we don't want to do anything much above that, because when you start getting into paving projects or reconstruction, now your scope of work is quite large, quite, you know, significant dollar amounts. This is actually just street maintenance that is often frequent and shorter in duration, and that's one of the main benefits of this IGA, which I'll touch base with you in just a minute. So when I say a scalloped street, here's a picture of Southern Avenue. So this is a scalloped street that's shared between the City of Apache Junction and Pinellas County. You can see Pinellas County actually owns the southern part of Southern, and we own the northern part. So it's not practical that we just do maintenance on the westbound lane, where they just do maintenance on the eastbound lane, and not do the maintenance altogether on the full segment of street. So this IGA will actually allow McDott and the City of Apache Junction, like what we've done with Pinellas County, to take a certain full segment of street. Hey, City of AJ maintains this street. At McDott, you maintain the full width of this part of Meridian, for example. So benefits. I think you probably just already deduced what the main benefit is. Again, these projects are very short in duration, so what will happen is, we will have a continuity of maintenance, meaning the whole street will be maintained, full width, versus only one-half of the street at a time. We'll take advantage of the economies of scale of doing a larger segment at a time versus smaller segments of streets, where we pay a lot for mobilization, equipment, the contractor to do it. So we'll be doing larger segments, taking, gaining efficiencies there. Actually, the street quality of the street will go up too when we do maintenance holistically with the whole segment of street versus half-streets. That increases the life of the street. Also, you'll see safety aspects of the street, where the striping, for example, is consistent on the street, on the streetway. And also aesthetics. And when I say aesthetics, maintenance, you know, cutting off the maintenance at certain points, doing longer segments at a time versus just little piecemeal sections that look odd. Also, when it comes to routine maintenance, means picking up garbage, illegal dumping. A lot of these streets, we can actually respond faster than McDott. And that, in a roundabout way, then adds better customer service. We're not asking, hey, what side of the street did you see that garbage? Was it on the west side of Meridian or east side? They could just tell us the location, and we will know, you know, who's responsible to go grab it. All right, now was it just a quick nutshell of what we're trying to do with this IGA that will be before you, I guess, tomorrow night? So I'm open to any questions or any comments.
Yes?
And I know this is kind of in the future, but will we have the same sort of agreement for south, the land we just annexed? Will half of Meridian be part of the Maricopa County as well?
It might be, or might not. It will be just depending on how we do the annex, or the development of Meridian.
Of Meridian itself.
I would prefer, and I believe it actually state law too, if we annex a corridor or a full street, we actually take the whole street with it instead of half a street. And I think that changed about 10, 10-some years ago. But we have a lot of, quite a few streets. We probably have around six, seven miles of streets that we have, or scalloped streets that we have to have this IGA to maintain.
Your Honor. Yes?
Just for clarification, is the reason that Mesa is not included in this IGA because it's technically a part of their county island?
Right now, what our right-of-way shows us is Mesa doesn't own necessarily a part of Mesa, so it is within McDott or Maricopa County.
Okay.
So I think that's answering your question of, this IGA would cover their portion, which is a small portion up in the northern, northwest part of town.
Okay.
So in those, in those areas, if somebody had a complaint or a question, would they call the city, and the city would determine if it's county or city that handles that section?
Correct. And then Maricopa County, too, on their onsite, where people could file their concern or complaint, they actually have a nice interactive map that you could choose that will actually show folks which streets they maintain. So hopefully, you know, they'll make it easier for those folks that either go to McDott or the city of what streets who maintains.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you.
Thank you. So, Your Honor, unless we hear differently, we're going to keep it on for consent tomorrow so. Okay.
Okay. All right. Tonight, we'll be conducting interviews for the annual appointments to all boards and commissions. We are interviewing all applicants tonight, and we'll be finalizing the appointments during our regular session tomorrow night. Interviews will be done alphabetically by applicant.
Thank you, Shane.
And Jennifer.
Shall I kick you off? Okay, so as you noticed, this year, in efforts to efficiently utilize this time for council and the applicants, staff has modified the process of interviewing and appointing to the boards and commissions. Tonight's work session, as you already addressed, you can interview all of the applicants. They are listed in alphabetical order, and this will alleviate the need to call them back in two weeks for another interview, maybe on the other boards or commissions they applied for. You'll notice that not only are they listed alphabetical order, they have also ranked their preference to which board they want to serve on if they applied for more than one. You do have the ability to ask an applicant if you find that they are qualified maybe in for another board or commission they did not apply for. You can always ask them if they'd like to serve on a different board or commission. Council does not need to fill every seat on every board or commission if you feel that you don't have a candidate that might fit that position. As long as the board or commission has a quorum to meet, they can still hold their meetings. I only have a few updates. Your first applicant, Carlos Aguirre, has withdrawn his application today. And then, as you see the pink sheet before you, Sarah was, received a new position and has a conflict with the Planning and Zoning Commission she applied for, but is still willing to serve on another board or commission that you feel might fit her. That is all I have for you.
Okay. So then we will start alphabetically, and I'll call Mr. Jeff Barlet.
First, I can just show them an example of what not to do. Okay?
Just relax, Jeff.
All right. But I'm Jeff Barlet, and I was on the library board, and I was board vice president, Industrial Development Authority, which never meets. I resigned both of them, just to let you know. I mean, everything I have written here is what I gave you guys, so this is my, this is every, every question you guys had here, just my statement here. But just give me a second here. But I mean, I'm trying to get on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I mean, you guys know me here, I'm a local activist. I get up and I speak on things. Usually, most of the time I've gotten up, it's been planning and zoning things that I've spoken on, and I don't think it was a good idea to call me up here first either.
You're doing fine.
Yeah. But I mean, I personally would see that, I mean, planning and zoning is my preference. I mean, that's where I'd be most qualified for, in my opinion. I mean, I used to have a real estate license in Texas. I didn't sell any homes. I just sent all my money to the broker, because you have to pay desk fees to get licensed out there. It's expired, and as far as, I mean, the other boards I applied for, I applied for Board of Adjustments, because, I mean, if I don't get planning and zoning, I mean, you could appeal the, people could appeal the decision to them. So I mean, I think that would be, I mean, either one of those two boards would be good for me. I mean, I'm more in favor of trying to help the applicant out. You guys know my philosophy about property owners, I kind of think they should be able to do what they want with their property, but I think there'd be a lot of back and forth between me and Joel if you put me on either one of those boards, because obviously, there's laws that need to be followed. And then, I did put in for Health and Human Services. I mean, I've gotten up here and spoke on things that I think need to be done relating to that. Again, that'd probably be more back and forth between me and the city attorney to see what we can do. I mean, I think the city can use public transportation, healthcare, but then you've got to see what can be done there. And then, another one I put in for was Municipal Property Corporation. That only meets once a year, so I mean, that's, I mean, in my opinion, you can kind of throw anybody on any of these boards. It's pretty much, I mean, comes down to like, how does this person, like, if I were a council member and I were appointing board members, a lot of it kind of would be based off of, would this person vote the way I would? And that's kind of how I would think. I mean, it's more based off of what someone's philosophy is, in my opinion, than what their experience is. And any questions here?
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah.
You okay?
Jeff, did you take the Citizens Leadership Institute?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Just curious, you don't, it's okay. Got it.
Here's the proof. If he tries to tell me I didn't.
Thank you.
But yeah, my best advice would be just read through my application, everything I had written there, because I'm the worst speaker here.
That's okay. I have a question for you, Jeff.
They got a couple on your way.
Now, you said at the very beginning, Jeff, that you had resigned from a couple of, could you explain why that was?
I wrote it down in my application, and it's just not the right board for me.
Okay.
I don't think the library board was a good idea. Industrial Development Authority, I don't even know when the last time that board's ever met, and I don't even think it will.
Jeff, did you actually apply for the library board, or did we ask you out of the audience?
I applied.
Okay.
More of, he talked me into doing it, but, yeah, I don't want to go back on that board. I don't think it's a good idea. I mean, I don't, I'm not interested in anything I didn't apply for, because I don't want to make that same mistake. And actually, I would recommend you probably asking people, like, is this what they really want to do in this board? Because, I mean, some of the, like, for example, someone who's wanting to be on the library board, they got, they got to be going to the library, they got to be interested in that kind of stuff. Me, I'm getting up here speaking on, usually at council meetings, usually planning and zoning kind of stuff. I think I'd probably be better at that. And I mean, I used to have a real estate license, I don't anymore, but I'm more familiar with that kind of stuff.
Jeff?
Anyone else over here?
No.
Okay.
I got a question. Brayden, you have a question for?
You can go first, if you'd like.
I see here, so Planning and Zoning would be your first choice?
Yeah, that's my first choice.
Did you, we just had a Planning and Zoning meeting. Did you attend it, or did you watch the video?
I spoke at the ones who, I think it was three weeks ago, you guys had a, you guys were building, bringing in houses, and this is another thing you'll be seeing, too. I mean, I noticed a lot of people, they don't like the development out here in this town. I mean, a lot of people oppose kind of like how I feel. I got up there speaking, this is what I think is best for the people. A lot of people are probably going to disagree with me on decisions. I'm not here to tell people what they want to hear. I think what would be best, these decisions are bringing in houses for people to live in that can lower the cost of living. I mean, it's supply and demand there, but a lot of people, they either don't realize that, or it's, I mean, you have people who, they might be concerned about little things, like something obstructs their view of the mountain, or whatever it is. I've noticed some people, they don't like certain groups of people coming out here. I don't know if certain people have like a, some people might have a prejudice towards certain groups, I don't know, but I'm not going to just assume that either. I just, that's just what I've heard, too.
So you didn't attend the last meeting or watch it?
Not, not last week.
Okay.
I was at the one three weeks ago.
Okay.
Jeff, you, and I just, for clarification's sake, you had indicated that Planning and Zoning was your number-one choice, and Health and Human Services your second, with Board of Adjustments as your third.
Yeah.
But earlier, it kind of sounded like Board of Adjustments might be your second choice over Health and Human Services.
I think Health and, Health and Human Services is my second choice. I mean, that meets more often, and I kind of want to push some ideas through that.
Okay, absolutely. Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else?
You can, you can push ideas by attending different meetings and contacting the president or the board of those meetings as well. And I'm just sharing this with you, in case you're not selected. You can always be involved where you think you can make a difference. There's, you don't have to be on the board, just so you know. Just share that.
Yeah, I already do that. And in my, and actually, just so other people know that, too, I mean, in my opinion, I mean, probably the most influential person in the room at any time is the person right here. I mean, there's people here that, I mean, that come up here and they speak their opinion. I mean, it is what it is. You're not getting paid for these boards, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Mr. Beal.
Your Honor, before we move on, I do just have a clarifying question of either Jennifer or Joel, if I could. On, regarding specifically the Health and Human Services Commission, it says that it's a five-member board, and I know that that's been the case traditionally in the past. A little bit earlier, I was able to at least briefly talk with Jennifer about the opportunity. We have a lot of applicants. Is there an opportunity for us to move that to a seven-member board if we wanted to possibly appoint more members to serve on that committee?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Biggs, yes, you may. You can change the city code, and you could add members if you'd like. That's, that's not a state-required board, it's a local government board.
But we wouldn't be able to appoint more members tomorrow, because they?
No, because right now, the code says five members.
And that's not necessarily a bad idea, per se, as we grow. You know, we may have a need for more, a larger board in that area. Good question, Brayden.
When the board originally formed back in 88, 89, or earlier, it was a seven-member board. They had a lot of suggestions, reading those minutes back then. And I, I just don't know at what point it became a five-member board. In the past years that we've had, we've had difficulty in finding members to serve on Health and Human Services. So I think maybe that's one of the reasons it went to a lower number on the board.
Well, we know we can function with five, but if, so if there were two vacancies, per se, if we decided for that to expand, it would just give the opportunity to have. Good question, I thought, I think that was a great idea.
All right, we'll try again. Mr. Beal.
Good evening, Charles Beal, longtime resident of the city. I'm here to make myself available to the boards if needed, and where needed. I bring a vast amount of experience and knowledge, and I like to think that I do my job when it comes to the process required for the boards. So, you know, consider me for what you need.
You're an incumbent on the MPC board.
That's correct.
Do you want to continue on?
Sure.
Okay.
But I want to make it available to other people as well. You know, I don't want to just fill a billet. You know, if there's somebody out there that, you know, would like to take that position, I'm more than happy to, you know, step back.
Okay, anyone have any questions? On this side? Nope. Yes?
You said you want to make yourself available for any board, any other board in particular that you may?
So I tend to travel a lot, so scheduling can be a conflict for me sometimes, but I'm typically able to work around it. Something that doesn't take a lot of time, Planning and Zoning would probably be a bad one for me, you know, because it does require a lot of time and a lot of study. So that would probably pull a whole lot of time out of my schedule, and I don't know if I have that, that much time, but all the other boards probably would not, you know? There's other boards that are, you know, are less impactful to my schedule.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I don't know what I need to tell you, because most of you all know me anyway.
Well, you're an incumbent on the Planning and Zoning. Do you want to continue on the Planning and?
I would enjoy continuing on the Planning and Zoning Commission, yes.
Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions? I see some writing down there.
I do, Your Honor.
Yes?
I've got a couple, Dirk. First off, I'm very curious to know, as an incumbent member, what do you think the Planning and Zoning Commission could improve upon?
Paying attention to the wants and the wishes of the community.
How do you feel that council could better support, as incumbent member? How can we better support Planning and Zoning?
Listen to the community.
And then my last question, how do you feel about, I've heard discussion on kind of both sides in regards to Planning and Zoning being a recommending body who recommends a decision to council? How do you feel about us going with your recommendation or against your recommendation?
Well, obviously, if I vote for something as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner, I would appreciate the city council voting alongside of me. But I don't have any feelings one way or the other. It's your decision to make, we make a recommendation, and it's your obligation to review the facts and then make your decisions. So it doesn't really affect me one way or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I just have a comment off of what was said. Dirk, sometimes what happens, and you guys may not know this, because it's not real common for council members to attend the P and Z for obvious reasons. We may be watching them online. Sometimes what can happen is information can change from the time that you guys had the information and made the decision. And so I know people often ask that question, well, why would council vote against?
That's understood, Your Honor.
Yeah, just wanted to share that. Yeah. It's not so much, it's not necessarily voting against, it's just that sometimes there's a, and then you've got seven different eyes, so it can happen.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Oh, you have a question, I'm sorry.
So there was a time where CUPs went through council, and Planning and Zoning was a recommending body. Since then, CUPs stayed with Planning and Zoning, and they don't come through council. Down the road, that should change back to Planning and Zoning becomes a recommending body instead of a final decision on a CUP. How would that make you feel?
If that's the desire of the council, I wouldn't have anything to say about it. Personally, I think some of you, as you all know, have quite a bit of things on your plates with your inter-agency organizations that you attend, the council meetings that you oversee, and the other business that's conducted in the city. I don't see where it would be a harm to the city or the city council to leave the CUP decision with the Planning and Zoning Commission, but that would be your decision.
Don't see any other questions, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Brenneman. Dr. Michael Brenneman. Hard to read these.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Dr. Michael Edward Brennan. I'm a board-certified psychiatrist by the American Board of Psychiatry and Neurology. I am a distinguished life fellow of the American Psychiatric Association. I'm also board-certified by the American Board of Quality Assurance, Utilization Review, and Quality Assurance and Risk Management. I'm a member emeritus of that organization. My predominant career, as you've probably reviewed in my curriculum vitae, has been in academic psychiatry. I taught at Maricopa Integrated. I was there for over 20-plus years. I was medical director of inpatient services. I taught first-year residents, basic psychopharmacology, third-year residents, administrative psychiatry, and fourth-year residents, advanced biological psychiatry. I have been president of the Arizona Psychiatric Society. I have been, as well, a chief medical officer of Magellan of Arizona. I was a prior corporate medical director for charter hospitals, and took care of all of the hospitals east of the Mississippi. I guess they thought that I'd never get snowed in if I left from Arizona, so let me, let me do that. What they forgot is, I could get snowed out. At any rate, I have been a medical consultant to the Arizona Medical Board. I collaborated on physician ethics, physician mental health issues, physician behavior and boundary issues, as well as collaborated with Dr. Michael Sutter and Dr. David Greenberg on substance-related issues. I was a medical director for Community Bridges, for their Emergency Crisis Intervention Center, and dealt with the prelude to court commitment. And at Maricopa Medical Center, of course, we did court commitment. I presented at the Gaines Conference in Boston to a national conference on standards for commitment, because Arizona actually is rather unique. We have four standards of commitment. We have two urgent, danger to self, danger to others, and we have two non-urgent, which are gravely disabled and persistent and/or acute disability. The latter one is predicated on a concept in neurology psychiatry called negative neuroplastic changes that go on as someone's illness is persistent and it isn't dealt with. You know, I could go on, that was too self-flattering, I don't mean to do that. I am applying for Health and Human Services, because I believe that's probably the only commission I'm really qualified for, for two reasons. Not only my background, but I don't really live in the city of Apache Junction. I live just outside. I live pretty close to the base of Suter's Tish Mountain, and I've lived there pretty soon for 11 years. And I have to say, I'm really enamored with it. So if you have any questions, my curriculum vitae is there, and I'll be ready to field any questions you have for me.
Have you attended any of those meetings? The Health and Human Services?
No, I haven't.
Or have you paid attention to the?
I went to look, and the only thing I could find, and I don't know if I'm just not astute enough to find anything on the web, but I found something for Pinellas County, and they had three major areas of interest, and they were substance abuse and treatment, mental health, and nutrition, and physical wellness. And I figure I make two of those.
Yes?
I have two short questions.
Sure.
It goes along with what Krista just asked you. The liaison for this commission is Jennifer Penya, our city clerk. Have you gone and spoken with her and sat down to find out what this job would entail?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Have you read the annual report?
I have not.
Okay. Thank you.
It might be a little bit different than what you think.
Yeah, I bet, honestly, yeah.
Kelly?
No, Your Honor.
I noticed that you have not gone through our CLI, or Citizens Leadership Institute. Obviously, the current class has already gone through, but we'll have one up- Obviously, the current class has already gone through, but we'll have one up again in the spring. Would that be something that you would consider doing if you were appointed?
Yeah, I'd consider that.
Yeah.
Yes.
It says you're currently employed by Behavioral Systems of Southwest. Where are they located?
Okay. Behavioral Systems of Southwest has two major facilities that I'm the medical director for. One is in Florence, and the other one is in Tucson. They deal with the reintegration of both state and federal felons that have behavioral health and substance abuse issues. If you'll think about it, one of the biggest problems that had taken place for the longest time was that people were released from prison and just sort of thrust in the community. This is a real mechanism to try and reintegrate them more smoothly and hopefully successfully.
Okay. Also, I don't know if you're aware, but our new judge is looking for a behavioral health specialist to sit on the court as well as a volunteer. So, that's something that, I don't know how much time you have or how often they're going to meet, but that might be something that would fit into what you're doing as well, because we both deal with the justice system. There was one more question. Oh, I know. If you get really bored, Tuesday nights here could be a case study.
That'd be really interesting, yeah.
I'm really curious to know your diagnosis of all of us.
In referencing judges, actually, Michael Hensy used to be a lawyer at Maricopa Integrated and dealt with the commitment process. He moved from that to commissioner of the mental health court. He is now a judge for the city of Phoenix. And so, I've had lots of interaction. In fact, he was one of the individuals that I interacted with when we went back to the Gains Commission, because that was attended not only by mental health providers, but as well the judiciary and multiple law enforcement agencies.
Well, thank you so much. It's not an easy job.
Yeah, I bet.
Your Honor.
I have a question, but not for the applicant, it might be for Jennifer. So, this particular board, five members, three at least residents, two non-residents. Now, is this set up that way, because preferably, we would like to have a couple on that board that is a non-resident?
I couldn't answer how the board was originally formed with resident versus non-resident.
As I recall, we've had this discussion in the past, that we wanted to make sure we could fill it with the right people, and those people weren't always found just in the community, so that we wanted to branch out into that area of influence, because our nonprofits also reach out to a great area than just the city boundaries.
So, out of all of our boards and commissions here, there's literally just one that we decided to reach out to non-residents to find better applicants?
There's two, the arts commission as well.
Oh, well, the arts commission, yeah. So, it isn't a matter of, hey, we would like to see two non-residents, and then three residents? It was a matter of necessity to get the people on the board?
Correct.
I've heard that as part of the discussion in the past. That's probably not going back to the 80s or 90s when they established it, but that's been more of the recent years' discussion.
Your Honor.
Yes.
You mentioned Community Bridges, and I've got a lot of experience lately contacting them in regards to issues with our homeless here locally. Do you have a business card?
You know, Mike Sutter and I remain good friends. Actually, I was a resident physician when he was an ER provider at what was then called Scottsdale Memorial. So, our history goes back a long time, as my ear might reveal. And so, he is the chief medical officer of Community Bridges, and I would be glad to contact him on behalf of the city if that becomes an issue.
I would appreciate that, and I only ask because often after the meeting, people run out, and I don't run very well, trying to catch up, so thank you. If we could connect, I'd appreciate it.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely. Thank you.
No one else? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Richard Cantwell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Dick Cantwell. I've been on plan commission for just short of a year now. My wife and I moved to Apache Junction about four and a half years ago to be closer to our grandsons. Prior to that, we spent 25 years in Munster, Indiana, where I was on the plan commission and Board of Zoning Appeals for over 20 years. And then, with a job change, moved to Mokena, Illinois, for 10 years. And five years, I was on their plan commission. So, both of those are suburbs of Chicago.
And you're the incumbent, and I assume that you want to continue on?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
How's it going? How's it going?
I'm enjoying it. It's a very interesting time.
It is.
You know, we've just gone through the 2020 census, and you see about all of these cities that are the fastest-growing cities in the country. And come 2030, guess who's going to be high on that list? Apache Junction.
Yeah. What's your opinion on Councilmember Big's CUP question? He asked if...
That was mine.
I'd love the credit for it, but it was all Robert.
Okay. Well, Robert asked about the CUP.
I have, most of the time, I've done CUPs in the past, it has been for a recommendation to council. I don't have a strong feeling on it one way or the other. I think CUPs probably belong in the same process as the other resolutions. You know, you're the final authority on things, and, you know, just like with the Board of Adjustments, making decisions that don't get reviewed by city council. You know, we can make some decisions that may not be in the same line of thinking that you folks are.
Anyone else over here? Okay.
I'd like to ask the same three questions I asked Dirk. Being an incumbent, one, how do you, or rather, what do you feel P&amp;Z could do better, or how could we support you?
I think of P&amp;Z, quite frankly, as working pretty well. Anytime you're dealing with planning staff, P&amp;Z, and city council, you are going to have differences of opinion. And the way that those get communicated, I think probably could stand some improvement. You know, in the past, we always had one of the council members either as an official member of the planning commission or as an ex-officio. And that was a great way to get some communication.
I've looked, I've looked a lot into that.
And, you know, that, the communication, I think, is important, because we make recommendations, and then you guys take the issue, and then rehash everything, almost as though you're starting from scratch. I don't know how much of our discussion you have seen. Sometimes there's different things that we discuss that don't necessarily make it to the minutes, and may or may not be important in the future decisions. You're also seeing things from a different perspective than we are. So, you know, I think better communications would be appropriate.
Great, thank you.
I just want to add one comment there, that there is, everything does make it to the minutes, it's just on video, not written minutes.
I understand.
So, that the public understands that, that, you know, if you want to see exactly what happened, it's in the video.
Yeah. And I don't know how much you folks are reviewing the video. You guys have kind of a full agenda, and I've watched some of your meetings, and I assume you've watched some of ours, and, you know, I think, you know, we have some discussions that you don't necessarily have.
And then, my last question is, being on the P&amp;Z, how do you feel about council not necessarily taking the recommendation and modifying it or changing it?
Like I said, there's going to be differences of opinion. Okay? We're going through one now, that, you know, P&amp;Z is looking at a situation differently than what planning committee did, or the planning group did. Okay? Who's right? I don't know. Ultimately, you will be making that decision. So, you know, I don't view conflict as being a negative.
Right.
Okay? You have to have an exchange of ideas, and you have to get to the right solution. Just like, you know, we get good input from some residents, and we get some, I'll call it, interesting. The classic one that I have is, we had somebody who sent around a petition and got 150 signatures, because we were going to install some cell phone towers 150 feet from her house and the neighborhood, and that was going to affect everybody's pacemakers through electromagnetic radiation.
That wasn't here.
No, that was Munster.
Just making sure.
Trust me. I happened to be working at a company that did electronic repair, so I was able to talk to some very skilled electricians who informed me that, yes, electromagnetic radiation is a cube root function, so it dissipates extremely rapidly. So, you go out and you try to find the facts wherever you can.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
No, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I apologize. Sarah?
Siri.
Scary?
Siri. Siri Gersner.
Jessner?
Not here.
Siri?
Siri.
Okay. Boy.
Glynnis Getman.
Good evening. My first time doing something like this, so forgive me if I'm a little nervous. I had applied for both the arts commission and the Health and Human Services Commission. Standing here now, I think I am underprepared and underqualified, perhaps. I wanted to apply for the Health and Human Services, because I do have some background in the medical arena. Not as a medical person myself, I was a human resources manager, so I worked closely with all the staff in both a nursing home as well as a home healthcare company. Also, being elderly myself, I think that also would provide some insight to with what our elderly population might need and help with. I say that I'm underprepared, because based on Dr. Brenneman, he certainly far outshines any qualifications I might have, but I will say that I am certainly willing to do whatever it is that the commission needs to be done. I feel like I'm a team worker. I think a team brings a variety of perspectives to any situation, and I think, generally speaking, you get a better outcome when you have more eyes looking at something instead of fewer eyes. In terms of the arts commission, I don't have any work-related experience in that area, but for my entire life, I've been involved with the arts, whether it's my own personal enjoyment, or I've been involved in a variety of community theaters over the years, including being president of some of the organizations that I was engaged with. That's a feel that interests me a good deal, because I guess I'm an artsy kind of person. So, I guess those are the things I would tell you about myself. So, do you have any questions?
Yes.
You want to expand a little bit more in experience, or what you do with arts?
Oh, okay. Well, I mean, I enjoy going, for sure. So, I'm a spectator, often, but when I was involved with the community theater, I had a variety of roles. You know, we were building sets, we were doing contracts to have facilities where we could put our shows on. We even got kicked out of a facility one year, and I had to find a tent where we could put a show on. That happened to be the year I was president. But, I have just objects of art that I've collected myself over the years, things hanging in my house, sitting on my shelves, southwestern stuff, horse stuff. But, so, is that, is that helpful? Yes.
Yeah, just wanted to know possibly what kind of arts you had ever been involved with. When we say the term arts, you know, that covers a plethora of things.
But, I'd be, you know, music, ballet, theater, musicals, just almost everything, really, that's involved in the arts, doing museum, cruising through museums and galleries and stuff.
Okay. Thank you.
You're at, anything else?
Kelly?
Sorry, I'm so nervous.
No, don't worry about it.
Yeah.
You're fine.
Am I correct to understand, we don't have a ranking of the boards that you've applied for, so am I correct to understand that you've applied for Board of Adjustments, Health and Human Services, Planning and Zoning, and Public Arts?
No, I only actually applied for two, and that was the arts commission and the Health and Human Services Commission. That was the, those were the only positions that the computer system told me were available. But I think, as a beginner, that those two would probably be the best places for me to start, because I do feel I have something to bring to those areas.
Wonderful, thank you. And then, do you have a preference over one or the other, in terms of which one you'd like to be on if we could not appoint you to both?
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Wherever you folks would think I would do.
Okay.
The best job.
Your Honor, I have a question with what Braden was asking. On what we were provided with, it shows that you're an applicant for Board of Adjustment, Health and Human Services, Planning and Zoning, and Public Arts. So, which of those do you really want to be considered for?
The arts or Health and Human Services. I'm a little confused about how that happened, because I was only given two options when I applied, but...
Okay. Thank you.
I think the human resources would be very helpful, and I think the name, Health and Human Services, is a little bit confusing, possibly, about, for what they, exactly what that board does. And so, we've got somebody right here in the audience.
And that's also part of what I meant by being underprepared, because I did not contact Jennifer to talk about the nature of the position. I simply read what was online.
No worries. I think, oh, go ahead.
It's okay. We've got somebody right here in the audience. This gentleman with the ball cap right up front can chat with you a little bit about that.
Okay.
But, yeah, no, yeah, it's easy to assume what that, what they do, and so...
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have one more question, actually. In your bio area, one of the things that you had stated was that you're active on social media and have begun to have a handle on the feeling of the community. Could you elaborate on that a little bit more? What have you seen or heard, or...
Okay, sure. I've just been paying attention, in general, to comments. I do comment some, but most of the times, I'm just looking at what other people say, because I'm relatively new to Apache Junction, so I'm just trying to get the feel of what people are thinking by what they post online.
Now, anyone else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That wasn't so bad, was it?
Samuel Graves.
He has a letter in here, Your Honor. Please, I'm able to...
Oh, okay. Sherry Hall. Cheryl Hall, excuse me.
Your Honor, as Cheryl's coming forward, could I ask a quick question? Do we know, was there any information, Jennifer, on Siri Gersner, in terms of...
She currently serves on the Health and Human Services Board, and all of the applicants were called and emailed Thursday and Friday of last week, just to remind them of this. As far as I knew, she was going to be present.
Okay.
But work, she may have gotten stuck at work.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Your Honor, I have still a quick question.
All right.
Because, Joel, because Siri, I don't think she was before, or if she was working for New Leaf at the prior, now that New Leaf is our domestic violence shelter, is that considered a conflict that she's on that commission?
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Evans, I'd have to know the structure of the corporate entity, so I, it's hard to answer that question, but if it's, if it's one that applies for funding, and she happens to be on it, then yes.
So, she would just have to recuse herself?
She has the conflict off on the vote.
On anything, basically.
That could be a problem, if you're combining, if you have like 10 agencies that want to get funds. get funds, then she's going to have to balance it. She'd then have input on all the conversations, and that would be influencing a decision for which she probably would have a conflict. However, I'd have to look at all the information before I can make that opinion.
Okay, so prior, when she was originally appointed to that, what do we, is there something that we do that we would go back and ask her? I understand, I mean, Health and Human Services typically meet the one or a couple of times a year, but not regularly. So between now and the time they meet again, does the city need to find out if, I mean, New Leaf hasn't applied, but they're also new to the community?
If they haven't applied, then there's no conflict.
Okay.
But...
Can I add to that? Even though they've taken over CAFSA, which has applied and is a current funder, or fundee, rather?
No, they didn't the last time.
Well, if she's an employee, and there's a connection on how she gets paid her salary, then that could be a problem. But this is the first I've heard of it, but usually I don't hear about conflicts until it's a conflict, so...
Well, if that, if the, if, big if, she is employed, but the agency has not applied for funding...
Then there's no conflict.
Okay. And then also, did you, just for clarification, did you say that she would have to conflict out of all the conversations and discussions, or if she worked for an agency that did apply, only, she would only have to recuse herself for the discussion on that part, or how, what would, all of it, right?
I think it'd be very difficult for someone on the commission to not have input on that particular one when, in their mind, they're thinking, well, wait, they really should be getting this, so they might have an influence on the other dollar amounts. And who's going to get picked?
So obviously, we try to avoid that, but it can happen, like something new that comes up, it could happen.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, for the opportunity to come up here and, and apply for the, either the library or the Parks and Rec commissions. I am a relatively, well, very recent Apache Junction resident. I moved back from California about six months ago, but I'm a longtime Arizona resident before my California stint. So I'm from the East Valley. I've lived in Tempe and Mesa most of my life, and just recently found a place here in Apache Junction. And I'm really liking living in this area. I'm really in love with riding my bicycle around and seeing the mountains. So I'm getting a huge kick out of being able to feel like I'm more in the desert than I've been in any of the other places in Arizona I've lived. I am interested in, I actually wanted to apply for the Citizens Leadership Institute, but there wasn't an opening. And so I said, well, I'll apply for a position. And, and so that's why I decided to go ahead and apply. And for, for the skill set that I have, I think library or Parks and Rec is probably the best fit for me. I don't have a background in real estate other than owning it. And most of my, I do use libraries. I do use Parks and Rec's offerings. So that's something that I have an actual personal connection to because I've used those services before, and I've felt a connection to what I liked about them and what I would like to change about them. And that's one of the reasons why those were the two that I applied for. My background is in human resources, mostly in training and development. I like to call it the fun part of HR. And I've worked on engagement drives. I've run, I've worked on recognition drives. I've worked on developing training and content, delivering training content. I have broad experience in all of those areas. And I am currently looking for a job in that area. And so right now, I have lots of time. Eventually, I probably will have a little bit more time devoted to that. But those, but neither library or Parks and Rec felt like it was such an overload that I wouldn't be able to handle the required work to make, to be an effective committee member. Do you have any questions for me?
Yes.
Okay, you've applied for Library Board and Parks and Rec, so these questions, you'll get asked a little bit of both. For the Library Board, have you spoken with the Library Director, Pam or Sansi Brown, either one?
No, I just recently had a chance to get my library card and actually walk through the library and see what offerings they had available. I was quite struck with the breadth of things that they have available. I especially liked the seed library and the book club sets that they have, something I hadn't seen in other libraries that I've been a member of. So I thought that they had a really nice breadth of things that they had available. And then I also walked past some of the resource rooms and saw the workforce, it looks like a workforce development little room that they have available. And obviously, I have an interest in that kind of, in that area, based on my background.
Have you attended any Library Board meetings?
No, I've only been in the city for about three months.
Okay. As far, as far as Parks and Rec's are concerned, again, have you gone and spoken with Liz Langenbach, the director, or any other department people?
No, not yet.
Okay. Have you been to the Multi-Gen Center?
I have not been there.
Okay. Have you gone on any ride-alongs with any park rangers?
No, I did not even know that was something I could do.
Have you reviewed Parks and Rec's fee schedule?
I have reviewed the budget. I don't think I looked at the fee schedule, but that was, I assume that that is what feeds into the revenue for, for Parks and Rec.
Okay.
I had questions about where the revenue comes for the library, because it does have a revenue, it does have a revenue line, doesn't it? And I know it's got an expense line, but I think it also has a revenue line. And I'm like, where does that, where do they get those revenues?
Oh, library fines.
Ah, okay.
Except we don't have fines anymore. Okay, thank you.
Right.
Your Honor, I do have a question, but for Jennifer, is there a length of residency requirement to serve on this board?
There are no length of residency requirements to serve on border commissions, only to vote in the election.
Thank you.
Okay. What is your, just, excuse me?
Go ahead, Kristen.
Real quick, I just wanted to ask what your preference was, if you had, if you had a preference between the two.
Probably library.
That wouldn't have been my guess, that's why I asked.
I'm a reader, so yeah, library would probably be first.
Thank you.
Okay, Robert.
You had mentioned that you were going to apply for the Citizen Leadership Institute, but they're, they're filled up. If you were to be appointed to one of these boards, would that deter you from applying to the next Citizen Leadership Institute?
No, it would not.
So you would have every intention to attend it?
Yeah.
The bald guy right behind you is the guy you want to see.
Okay.
All right, anyone else?
He's not totally bald.
Nope, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would have used the term cute.
Yeah, but...
You're trying to make me laugh here now?
She can't go talk to CE. He's not an employee.
Ronald Krußner?
Yvonne Cruiser?
Cruiser?
It's okay, Yvonne. He gets my name wrong, too.
Hi, my name's Yvonne Cruiser. I have been a resident of Apache Junction since 1989. My husband and I have had a business in town since 1988. We were very active several years ago, and then we both got second shift jobs, which kind of affects being, being able to volunteer and stuff. I've applied for the Library Board and Parks and Rec and the Arts Commission. Library or Parks and Rec, either one, they kind of even out. The reason for those two boards specifically is our children got so much resource and help out of those two areas. Growing up here, our daughter was an employee of Parks and Rec's from the time she was 15 till she was 19. So they're very kind of near and dear to my heart because they really help shape our kids. So, any questions?
Any questions down here? How about questions over here? Yes.
I have one question. So you have a business out of your house?
We do.
And do you have a city business license?
We do.
Thank you.
And it's all been approved, it's all been approved to run out of our house, too?
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
We did that all legal, like you're supposed to.
There are many people that do it right, but we have a few sometimes.
Yeah, because we've, we've actually been working out of our house since the mid-'90s. So, yeah.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Your Honor?
Yes. Go ahead.
Do you currently have a library card?
I do.
I was going to say, I know you go to the library. I see you there about every two weeks, but...
I do have a library card. I have never not had a library card since we lived here.
Awesome. So in any of these boards, what is something that you feel that you could bring to the table? Is there maybe a different, like, event or, or opportunity that we're not doing that you'd like to see us work towards?
I think that's part of becoming the board, is finding out more of the inside workings and just seeing what, because I, because we have been kind of out of touch between our second shift jobs, and then I was taking care of my dad for several years. Right now, I'd like to get back in and see what they're doing. I know they've always been pretty forward in stuff that they've done since, for as long as I've known.
Okay, yes.
Yvonne, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Since I know who you are. And for years, you were an accountant with Pinell County.
Yes.
Yvonne has an extensive accounting background.
Also government.
Yeah. If you weren't appointed to one of these boards, would you be interested at all in the Municipal Property Corporation, which is a board that requires people who, they have to fill out an extensive annual report and dealing with bonds and everything for the city?
Test my skills, aren't you?
Yeah.
So similar to grant reporting, is what you're saying.
Is that something you would be interested, okay?
Sure.
That's one of the little notes I had here for, just an afterthought for you. Yes.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Jaime Lanzo?
Lanza.
Lanza?
Lanza.
Sorry.
Pronounced Jaime.
Jaime, yeah.
Thank you very much. Good evening, for allowing me to participate in this process. My name is Jaime Lanza. I'm originally from La Paz, Bolivia. I moved to Apache Junction from Lebonwoor, Kansas, 20 years ago. Under recent years, I noticed very positive progress in the city, which is one of the reasons I decided to be part of this board. Also, my strength is to follow policies and procedures, in order, that helps me to, in my decision-making process, also recommendations. Every time I'm going to make a recommendation, always going to be with a goal that will benefit the city as well the citizens. And I hope you give me this opportunity. That's all I got, unless you've got any questions for me. Thank you again.
Anyone else got questions?
Yes, I do.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Lanza, have you sat down with Larry Kirsch or anyone else in the Planning and Development Department and gone over what this, the requirements are for P and Z?
No.
What, okay. Have you attended any of the P and Z meetings?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Can you tell me what a CUP is?
No.
And have you looked at the city codes?
Some, I've seen codes.
Okay. All right, yes.
One of my forte is always, I'm always believing, you have to learn the procedure. You have to learn the policies, and including the law, and always like to do that, even though it's boring, but I like to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, Your Honor?
Yes.
I'll ask you the same question that I've asked the other applicants for Planning and Zoning. How do you feel about council going against the Planning and Zoning recommendation?
Always bases on, I'm a very practical individual. I have to base, I got to have the facts. I don't let influence my emotions. If I got the facts, everything I do my, base my decision. And that's what I will be doing.
Great, thank you.
I'm going to ask one here now. Would you be interested in the Industrial Development Authority with your background and information?
Yes, I will. Yes, I will.
Okay. All right, anyone have any? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. McGraw, Michael McGraw.
I was going to say, I didn't see.
Nope, okay. Jeffrey Michelle.
Mitchell. Evening, Mayor and council members. So I'm Jeffrey Mitchell. Wanted to, first of all, thank you for appointing me last year as a member of the Health and Human Services Board. So that's one of the ones I'm seeking to apply for this year. I think last year, the big question was, who is this guy? You know, so new to Apache Junction. Now, I've been here for another year, so I think a lot of you have seen me around the community doing different things. Couple of key things that I've done personally, I was a graduate of the Citizens Leadership Institute with Al Bravo. I also did the Pinell County's Sheriff Posse with Mark Lamb's program. I am part of the Rotary Club and did a couple of service projects through Rotary. Also was recently selected to be on the Rotary, Rotary Board of the Superstition Mountains because basically, just some of the projects I did, we're going to continue doing, and, you know, it's Ed Shockley's old role, doing the community outreach. And also, part of the Quanis Club. So those are some different things. Again, with interest are the Health and Human Services Board first. I'm also looking at Planning and Zoning. Not that I have experience, but Joel Stern recommended it to me based on conversations that we've had. And finally, Public Arts. So I'll open it up to any questions.
We're still wondering who you are. It's just a little bit of a...
Anyone have any questions?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes.
I'll go ahead and start with P and Z, and ask the same question of recommendations to council, and how do you feel about us going against them?
Well, I think when you appoint us to the boards and commissions, we got to do a lot of the legwork and homework. So I hope they were taken strongly, but at the end of the day, I'm not the elected official. So we would defer that decision to those who are elected. But at the end of the day, I hope they would be taken very strongly.
Thank you. In regards to Health and Human Services, you've been on there a year now, I believe, right?
Yep, that's the incumbent.
What have you learned since being on Health and Human Services, and what do you think that we could do better or different?
Well, I learned a lot. How much goes into the selection process for the funding, the money that's given from the city to the nonprofits. There's a lot that goes into that. Reviewing the annual reports of all the applicants, making sure there's a lot of accountability. And I think that there's a lot that we could do better. Just after making the presentation to council about the funding, I saw that there's a lot of need for more of an increased relationship. I hope that as a board, we will meet more frequently in the next year. I hope that we can have that meeting with council and the nonprofits and even the board as well. So there's a lot of things I think that could be improved, just in seeing how the last year went. Also, just duplication of service efforts. We don't want to see that happening. I'm encouraged personally, after talking with Darla at the Salvation Army, they're not doing the same meal distribution that Genesis is doing. They're deferring that, and that was an indirect response to a lot of the duplication of efforts. So I think we got a lot of things that we can really do better, and, you know, just in that year of experience.
Thank you.
Anyone else down here? Yes.
Jeff, I want to first start out by thanking you for what you've been doing on Health and Human Services. I think you're doing an excellent job on that. As far as Planning and Zoning is concerned, have you sat down with Larry or anyone in Development Services and talked to them about what it would entail?
I have not.
Okay. How many meetings have you attended of Planning and Zoning?
Have not attended those. Although I will say that after attending several city council meetings, I know how important it is. I've seen it. It's probably the biggest matter of debate amongst the council every time we see those issues come up.
And can you tell me what a CUP is?
I believe that is a conditional use permit.
And have you looked at the city codes that apply to Planning and Development, Planning and Zoning?
Well, I know that they're pretty extensive. Like, they get into like, what's an R-12 versus an R-10, or, you know. So I don't know those off the top of my head, but I would do the homework if I were selected for it.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I do have one, and for... All right, I do have one for the arts. What is your interest in art?
Well, it really stems from a lot of my background in Illinois. So, I worked with a lot of artists personally. I'm a financial advisor with Prudential. And so, artists are independent contractors. And they're great at their craft, but they're not so great at handling other matters. Like, their brain is totally one-sided. They don't know how to deal with analytical stuff. So, I had a lot of artists as clients, and I worked with Consensus Chicago and helping them fundraise and just seeing the artist community there.
Who was that?
Consensus Chicago. It's like a arts community, a communal arts community. So, they had all kinds of things going there, like theater, plays, people doing different performances. It was a really cool, cool thing. But being a part of the focal point, I go to that meeting at the Chamber of Commerce pretty much every two weeks, every two months when we have it. And one of the goals that Mayor Sertie, or former Mayor Sertie suggested, sorry, was that downtown be more walkable and that we do stuff like the Gilbert Art Walk and we really bring into account some of the things that we have that are resources in the arts. So, I'd love to see that expand. I'd love to see us do more for artists and highlight that. And, you know, just it's a... I would be applying as somebody interested in the arts since I'm not a great artist myself.
You've talked about that a good bit when we first interviewed you, and I never forgot it. Your history back east and with the arts and stuff. It was very interesting to listen to you.
Yeah, I did do speech in theater in the past too, so there is that.
Okay, no more questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
And I know Mr. Mohabon's not in today, so skip to Moore.
Terrell Moore.
Terrell.
Terrell.
You jumped ahead?
Hi, I was going this evening. Terrell Moore, and I'm actually going for Parks and Rec. But after hearing some of the things that's going on, I wanted to put in consideration for the Library Council also. And the reason why I want to do that is because even for me, I'm a military war vet. I was in the Air Force Reserve and just... and I was in the Security Forces. And one of my main focuses is really just keeping youth within, right? As we get older and getting a better understanding of just what life is really about. For me, I've had no guidance, so trying to be the one to guide is what I'm actually trying to do within my lifetime. The cool thing that Jeff said at being on certain services as being Rotarian also, we're looking at really trying to step things up with our generation to show the future generations of what we can do and know that as we're doing the same thing that's been followed by tradition, they also can have a better understanding. One thing I really do like about Parks and Recs is just what they have going in the sense of making it the dog park and also having the ability to do more in a sense that helping with the youth too and then also helping with the older generations and also with the library. I'm very impressed within the library on what they're doing to really be transparent, to bring up what is the basic, you know, library, but then adding so much more. As with me going in, I noticed that they do have a 3D printer. I have ideas. That's amazing, because again, as hitting levels like that on both levels on with Parks and Recs, ideas are able to come into play tremendously. And as the youth may not have much of a passion as being... Them really being affected with the pandemic and trying to cope with it, we are the ones that actually try to be the guidance to really help them out. I really do think that I can put forth in anything that comes to mind to help them out or if I'm not able to help them out, actually look towards my peers to where I could get a better understanding, actually teach them to.
Any questions? Yes, Charlie.
Mr. Moore, give us a little more information about your background personally.
With my background, I'm born in Alaska, born and raised in Alaska, moved down to Washington State. I came down here to Arizona because, again, with me not having an understanding of life after getting out the military, I went through a struggle. So, as me getting the proper help through the VA system over in Phoenix, during the timeframe of them having the negative impacts and all the hearsays, I am an individual to say that they helped me out tremendously where I got my bachelor's degree over at ASU within these last couple of years and really getting on my feet and now looking to really run. What else? I have three kids here with my fiancee, Sarah Snyder, and then also have three kids up in Washington State too. And actually, again, bringing that monogamy together to where they know that there's a better understanding as we continue to live and continue to understand more about just life in general.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yes.
Excuse me. Mr. Moore, have you met with Liz Langenbach or anyone else with Parks and Rec? And talked about that, serving on that board, the commission?
I did a quick, brief email to Liz to show interest as I was taking the CLI. But really, the... her and I's conversations are more about other things that are going on in the community with a couple of events that's coming up. So, to really zero in on Parks and Recs, I have not.
Okay. Have you toured the Multi-Gen Center?
I have, yes.
Okay. Have you gone on any ride-along or gone to any of the other parks? How many parks do we have in AJ? Okay. How many parks?
I'm gonna throw it out there, you know, because again, it's a good question. I would say four. I could be wrong, but I think four is a good number.
How many? Nine?
Nine, plus five.
We need more.
We need more. That's the answer. We need more.
Have you reviewed the fee schedule for Parks and Rec?
I have not. To learn more about what is needed is something I'm looking to do. I know right now, with me being employed over at a local Walgreens and also doing some other stuff, I haven't really seen what is needed within Parks and Recs, but that is something that I'm really looking to actually accomplish.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't so much have a question as just two things I want to point out. Is while you were talking about the amazing services that our library provides, and I 100% wholeheartedly agree, I couldn't help notice the library director right behind you, who I'm not entirely sure didn't start crying from just pure joy over everything that you're talking about. So, way to go. But also, just to commend you, since I've gotten to know you more and more, you've been actively involved in any way, shape, or form. The only thing I could say differently was I wish you were a Kiwanian instead of a Rotarian, but we'll talk about that later.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Unless you want to say something else?
Yeah, do both.
No, thank you.
I want to have a quick question.
Okay.
Where do you see yourself in 10 years out here?
That's a big question.
Wait, you're new? You're on this board? You did the Citizen Leadership Institute? You seem to be a go-getter.
Yes, and that's the thing. I am a go-getter. I've fallen though with me, just with the experiences of living, of me having hurt feelings and stuff like that and trying to endure as me being unbalanced, understanding that that's part of me and I'm able to grow. There's so much more to do. In 10 years, I would love to possibly be where you guys are at. If not, look to do more. If not, me help those who want to be in the same position or help guide. I want to write a book. I do have a fun fact. And I hate to say it, but I'm gonna say it. If you go to Google and put in my first name, I pop up. And so, having that opportunity, just by that, the sky's the limit. So, I'm hoping to, as the opportunities have been there in 10 years, I can make a difference here in Apache Junction because I've devoted myself here to Apache Junction in any way possible.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just have a comment. You know, in listening to you, wanting to influence and engage with children and children's programs and kind of create a pathway for them, something comes to mind, especially with your background. There's an organization called Eagle Pathway. And what they do is they help foster children that have aged out of foster care and a lot of them have become homeless. The majority of children that are... that age out do end up on the streets. And I just see you being such a leader in something like that. I think these boards are great, but I think you have a lot of potential to really influence and impact the lives of children that need somebody like you.
Thank you, thank you. Even if I'm able to get the information, as you guys see, as me being a go-getter, I'm willing to go for it. Why not?
Thank you again.
Thank you, Terrell.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Frank Schoenbach.
Shane.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Frank Schoenbach applying for Parks and Rec. I'm an incumbent there and also interested in board of planning and zoning. Been on Parks and Rec, now going on six years. Interesting part about that is I came on to get the glory as Flatiron was completed without having put in any of the preliminary work into it. I got to be in the picture. But I've been involved in the dog park from the get-go. And that's been an interesting project as we near completion now and finalization. I think the most important thing we do as board members is ask questions, trying to find out, you know, what is really the issue and how can we best support the Parks and Rec Department in advancing that issue. My wife and I are fortunate to have a medical advantage for our social security, so we get free gym membership at the Multi-Generational Center. So, we are there three days a week, which is also a good way for a board member to keep an eye on the system. Jamie has asked us to be more involved as board members, and that's one of my contributions to her effort. As far as planning and zoning goes, I've been on the board of adjustment now six years, I think five years. And we've had some interesting cases, and there again, the only thing we have there is to ask questions and to find out what the real issue is and how to get down to resolving it. All those cases involve research, both looking up things on the internet as well as going out to the site itself and seeing what the actual physical situation is. So, as planning and zoning going, you've got a couple incumbents, I believe, are doing a good job. Mostly, I want to throw my hat in the ring like I have every time it comes along, and sooner or later, I hope they get lucky. But for tonight, really, I'm looking for a Parks and Rec reappointment. Liz values my services on the commission, and I like being there.
Any questions?
All that work on the dog park, and I don't remember you being in the picture for it.
It was a sad day that day. There were things going on.
We can Photoshop you in it.
Yeah, well, that's okay. I'll be there for the grand opening, I guarantee you. All right. All right, thank you.
Always good to see you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service, Frank.
Okay, Mr. Schroder.
Good evening. George Schroder, 244, for West Virginia. A resident 40 years here. So, I am applying for zoning and planning and zoning. I got a lot of great qualifications for this position. Leadership. Boy, as soon as somebody stands up and wants to lead or, you know, do something about something, you get slapped down. Oh, you're crazy. You can't do it. You're wrong. I mean, it's a whole gauntlet. To our applicants for mental health and our resident psychologist, AJ in the city council, and don't be offended. It's kind of a nice thing. Reminds me of the world according to GARP. There's a leadership for you. The guy has his hands full, and what does he do? Let's take it out of the picture. Let's take it out of town. Let's see. Let's run up the flagpole, see what happens. Well, that's AJ. He got, what, 60, 70 years of that, and it shows in our neighborhoods. Some are not doing so good. Some are doing better than others. Like the lady said, it's wonderful to look out tomahawk and the horses and the trails. Wonderful. Well, of course, I don't want to be negative, but when you come back to my neighborhood, there's good people there, hard workers. They can't afford the new housing that's coming in. They get $25,000, $30,000 income. Really? So, what do we do? We're gonna give them cardboard houses to live in? That's all they can afford? Or on the streets with pup tents? We can do better than that. We can. We really can. So, leadership. Ever since I'm a kid, I got like 15 years landscape and design. Before I graduated high school, I had a two-year degree in ornamental horticulture, five years of carpentry. Just what my grandfather taught us. Plumbing, electrical. 12 years of classical music. Never got a second. In 12 years, I never got a second place medal. We went all over the United States. I have, in case you're thinking I'm goofing, I have records to prove it with my name on it. Now, when you play with 120 people, I assure you, that's discipline. Discipline like most of you have never seen in your life. We got an invitation to play for the Naval Music Cadets in Hattiesburg, Mississippi. At seventh grade and eighth grade, we were playing junior and senior university college music. We did it better than they did. This is not a... this is not a maybe. We got awards for it. Big awards, national awards. There's other things I can tell you. I'm a lifelong thespian, coin collector, stamp collector. Some of you saw my... a few of my stamps. They're beautiful. They're fine, finest in the world. So, I know what fine is. I also know what it's like to be without. My father died when I was six. His father died. My grandfather, on the other side, died within three months of each other. My kids, my brothers and my mother, my brothers, my sisters. Two of them are here. One is in New York. All the rest are dead. Dead. I got no one to turn to. So, I've been homeless four times in East Valley. So, to our resident psychologist, don't tell me I'm crazy. The chief beat you to it.
Hey, Your Honor, I have a question.
Yes.
Yes.
If the CUPs were turned back over to council, how would you feel about that?
And I appreciate what planning and zoning has done with the cups. I do. And I didn't want to take too much time, but, okay, so we go there, okay. So, the last one with, and I don't know if I can mention any names, but the one with the hitching post, that was a cluster. That really didn't turn out well at all. And by the way, I don't sue people. How many times have I told you that? I don't sue people. I look at the case, because I used to be in law enforcement as an investigator, not an official investigator, but that is one of my titles. Investigate things, make sure they go right. Very, very high-profile job. So, you want every little bit of information you can get in a cup. You know, it pertains to each individual, each individual business, how they're gonna run it, when they're gonna run it, who they're gonna run it with, who they're gonna run it for. I feel that the planning and zoning on the hitching post really got it wrong. It kept coming back, kept coming back. Then we had to make, you know, rules and ordinances against them. He didn't comply. And he did comply, and that wasn't good enough. The time ran out. That was really, really bad. But there are others that went pretty smooth. Have I been to planning and zoning board meeting? Yes. I went to the last one with the Havenly and the one down there at the Broadway and the trail. You know, sometimes you think I'm like Mikey. I hate everything. No, I'm not. I thought the first housing, planning apartments was very nice. It's a great fit for that area. But the new ones at Havenly, if we go through that, we're spending money to initially start up that whole, this whole area over here. And that's what the general plan is about. I think that's wrong. We'll work on that later. But why would we want to develop all that when my neighborhood, my streets have not been touched in 40 years? Now, I know what you're saying. If I'm on the board, I'm not gonna stand there, you know, high and mighty and say my streets come first. I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna do that. That wouldn't be right. That wouldn't be right to the people of AJ. I'm there for everybody, just like these gentlemen said. I'm there for everybody. I think your horses, Chip, deserve as much attention as a dog park, as as my sidewalks, as as a flag at Iron Flatiron Park. Everything counts with our city. But we have people that are so entrenched in their personal endeavors, they're not really thinking about other people. They're not. I'm telling you, I'm a Libra. I go back to zero. If I go too far this way, I gotta come back. If I go this way, I gotta come back. It's it's just me. And that that is really a good point. When you say leadership, I sat outside Elle's class once one time. It would suggest lots of talking and listening and note-taking. At the end of the day, you're learning how to work with other people. Great, I've done it, been there, done that. Of course, they don't always like what I have to say, but I listen. How long have I been coming? I've been coming here for almost fifteen years. Eight of the last ones, very intense, very focused, very opinionated. But I'm here. I'm I'm concerned. How many people come up to these meetings like I do? Not many.
That's right.
And I'm here, and I'm talking, and I'm talking, and I'm talking till I'm blue in the face. When's my streets gonna be done? Six years, it was two years. Four years, it was two years. Two years ago, it's two years. Today, it's two years. Really? I don't think I don't think we need to be spending money developing a corridor when the rest of the people are still, you know, forty years behind you. Okay? It's wrong. Let's get everybody on the same page, playing for the same team, talking about the same things, and, you know, depression, and our folks that applied already. I can't think of anyone that's more depressed than I am. I've been dealing with it for so long, right? I don't have enough to do. Mr. Schroeder was over at my house, he saw what I could do. Other people have been over at my house, they see what I got, see what I'm doing. I'm doing it by myself. I'm putting, I'm rebuilding my entire house. Of course, I don't have many friends. Nobody's nobody's standing up to help me. I'm doing it anyway. I'm taking care of my girl, she's eighty-four years old. You know, she's got, you know, progressive lung.
Mr. Schroeder, with all due respect, can we ask the could we ask our mayor if we could ask questions?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to give a full picture. I'm not just up here for a fat head.
I have two questions, Your Honor. The first one is the same I've asked every other planning and zoning applicant, is your thoughts on council going against the P and Z recommendation?
Well, I thought I answered that. I I I don't have a problem going against it, because that's all we're supposed to do is investigate, seek the facts, and it, nothing political, absolutely nothing political. I detest that.
Thank you. And then the second question is, at various times in different meetings, you've been pretty vocal against various members of staff. If appointed to the board, you'd have to work with those very members of staff, and publicly criticizing them or isn't necessarily always the best choice. How could you work with them now, given that history?
Again, that's like the world according to GARP. I'm a bad guy, he's a good guy. Who's opinion? I got the facts. I know what I'm talking about. I do, absolutely, more than most people you can possibly think of. Now, I am a leader, which means, yeah, I go right to the edge, right to the edge. And and there's been times when I went over, not just here, but other times, many times in my life. And I paid for it, but I thought it was worth it, because I'm here today, willing to give you answers that you need, that you can't find anywhere else.
Okay, anyone else have questions over here?
I would just thank you for your candidacy. You've been very open and honest about a lot of things.
Thank you. Okay, Christopher Simpson.
Mayor Wilson, council members, thank you for inviting me today. My name's Christopher Simpson. I, just a little bit about me, I am an East Valley native. I was born and raised in Mesa, Arizona. Went to Mesa High School, graduated by Arizona State. There I did interdisciplinary studies, bachelor's degree, both in sociology and in communications. I then moved out here where I lived from two thousand and two to two thousand and nine. Two thousand and nine, I was accepted into a physician assistant program in New York City, moved out there and completed that, where I worked in emergency medicine. By way of Oregon, I have returned back, and I currently practice in emergency medicine both in Phoenix, Queen Creek, and here in Apache Junction. I am applying for the Health and Human Services Board, and have any questions?
Okay, yes.
Where is InVision Healthcare located?
InVision Healthcare is actually a national conglomerate. I work for Emergency Emergency Professional Services. We are a group of providers, physicians, physician assistants, nurse practitioners that are then staffed into an emergency rooms locally through Banner Hospitals.
Okay, so.
This group is with Banner University, Banner Ironwood, Banner Goldville, and Banner Australia.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you. What is your experience with some of our various community nonprofits or social service agencies?
I think it's quite extensive. In the emergency room, we are kind of the failsafe to the community. So we extensively deal with the underserved populations, the homeless, the drug abuse addicts, and we have to try and get them resources. So I'm luckily to be assisted by social workers and case managers, but we are the medical standpoint to that. So I do see these patients every single day and make referrals from there.
Thank you. And then have you ever been to one of our Health and Human Services meetings?
I have not, but I've watched the last two years on video. So I am very well aware of what the budgetary restricts or constraints are within the within the commission. Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else over here? Yes.
Just one short question. Have you reviewed the annual report to see what all our city is looking for and what they do for our Health and Human Services?
I have not actually reviewed the report, but through watching the videos, I am aware of the local nonprofits that are that they are doing the budget for or making recommendations for the budget for.
Okay, thank you.
You don't see anymore? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Sandra Snyder?
Sarah.
Sarah. She. Yes, go ahead.
I'm much shorter than all of them.
[laughing]
A little bit about me, I am an Arizona native as well, pretty much East Mesa, Meridian and Broadway. And then my first job was out here in Apache Junction. All my schooling was in Mesa. My professional background, well, I have my master's degree in business, and then pretty much it's been in finance. So corporate finance in Scottsdale. A couple years ago, just just shy of the pandemic, I decided to leave Scottsdale because I was tired of driving to and from, spending all my time in the car. I also wanted to just be more involved locally. So I worked in healthcare, in home health, became a certified dementia practitioner. But even then, it was still located in Mesa, and I wanted to be really involved in Apache Junction. So I left that, wanted to be working in the city that I live in, which I've been here for seven years. And so I started at Tera Diddles with the main purpose, even though, yes, I have my MBA, I have a corporate background, and yet I went to be a server at Tera Diddles. My main objective there was really, no offense, Chip, but I want to be mayor one day, very big aspirations to become mayor in the long future. But really, my main goal at Tera Diddles was just to get to know locals, just talk to them on a daily basis, see what they felt about the community, what they wanted to change about the community, and just really just welcome them with an open heart in the community. I do serve on the Board of Directors for my own HOA. And then just this past Monday, which I did have to email about, because I did initially plan for planning and zoning. However, I accepted a job over at Roadhaven as the executive administrative assistant to their Board of Directors, and their meetings are every second and fourth Tuesday of the month, which are the same as planning and zoning. So I am open to a board. I don't necessarily know if I feel that one really sparks my interest over another, because I think they're all very beneficial. Every part of them do have to work together to make our city run efficiently, and I I love the growth in our city. I'm all for the growth, but I do want to keep the scenic views as well. I want that small-town feel, but with growth, just not high towers. That's me.
Any questions?
Yeah. The only person hated more than city council is an HOA board, so thank you.
Yeah. I know, now I represent too. Yeah, every day.
You indicated, or at least we have indicated here, that you have a business in AJ being Tera Diddles, but you're, are you a part owner of some capacity that I'm not aware of?
At Tera Diddles, no.
No, you're just you just worked there.
Yes, I worked there.
Worked.
I started as a server and then about a month later became a supervisor.
Okay, perfect. And then in your, please state why you would like to be appointed to the Board and Commission, and you kind of touched a little bit on it, but you stated that you have much to offer in terms of general knowledge and how citizens feel about their local government. Can you expand a little bit on that, about things you might have seen or heard, or what you feel you you bring to the table with that knowledge?
Yeah. As far as what I've heard, I do follow, I would say, some meetings. I follow every page of social media. I'm not a poster on it, but I do follow for like the AJ info, I follow the police, I follow all of our, I follow our parks and recs, and, you know, all of our pages, the main city-owned Apache Junction outlets, I would say. Those I am a part of, and I do read all the information. As far as when going out, I do attend nearly every event, just to talk and get to know my locals, because I am a local as well. And just know, you know, kind of hear, I hear some of their concerns. Yes, I know there's always all opinions, as far as, you know, what they think about the new buildings, or what changes they want to see, what they don't want to see. And I just try to be a positive advocate. As far as knowing, yes, Apache Junction cares about the people, but we also have to maintain a city. You know, we have to know as far as future generations, what's going to help our future, what's gonna help with our children, and what's gonna help with our land. There are more concerns than some just basic opinions, I would say. So it's just, I would say I more so read between the lines and try to find some truth in it, and then just be a positive advocate as much as possible.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else in here? Yes.
Your Honor, Sarah, I'd like to ask you, you applied for planning and zoning, but because of your job, you can't.
That's correct.
Do this that those same nights. When we look at these boards and commissions, we need to start more and more as we grow to assign people who have experience or background or something in in those specific boards or commissions, instead of just saying, oh, well, we'll appoint somebody. So I'd like you to tell me, out of the nine boards and commissions that we're looking at, which ones specifically that you would like us to consider you for besides P and Z?
Well, I think Board of Adjustment would be a good fit, just with having such a corporate background and needing to be in a room to make decisions. You have all your, I guess, evidence, and you kind of have to be an advocate and look at what is fair and honest. That that one would be a good board. I would love Park and Recs. However, I know my fiance has applied for it, and I don't want to kick him off of a board. So, but that is something very intriguing to me as well, just because I am very involved and love to be able to bring the community together and, you know, really make sure people get out of their houses and just be involved in the community.
Okay, answering that you'd be interested in Board of Adjustment, you said?
Yes.
Okay. The job of the Board of Adjustment is to listen to appeals and make decisions on zoning administrative decisions. So tell me, how would you know that? I mean, have you reviewed the zoning ordinances? So you could make a.
I've reviewed the codes online. I know when we were going through the CLI class, we went, I did attend a planning and zoning committee, and then was navigated, you know, I then went home and navigated online and able to look at all the codes. I read through it, I could not memorize them, but I have.
None of us can. Have you gone to Development Services and spoken with Larry Kirsch or anyone else there?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I think your answer for Board of Adjustments was spot on. I think that's exactly what you need. You need to be in tune, you need to be involved, and you need to be fair and balanced. I loved that answer, and it's probably one of the best answers I've ever heard for that board.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I have one. Would you be interested in the Industrial Development Authority?
I am not very familiar with that board, but if it was a way to serve my city, then I would research it and become available.
Number two best answer, right?
Yeah. Like I said, I know I have to start somewhere in order to become mayor someday, so.
I think.
I got a.
I got the feeling that's gonna happen.
I got it in there.
I think her and her fiance are gonna go head to head for mayor, and it's.
No, no, no. I got it.
I think we need to let him take the mic again, just to, you know, rebut that.
Crossfire here.
No, he'll let you take it.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brenda? Brenda?
Thank you for having me here. It's Frank Smerna. I appreciate you all taking the time this afternoon and this evening. My wife and I moved to Apache Junction about four years ago. Prior to that, we lived in Tempe for about thirty years. I retired from Motorola, worked at General Motors in the Chicagoland area, and we moved down here. We got a taste of the warm weather in July of nineteen ninety, when it was one hundred and twenty-two degrees, and it sure beats the fifty below in Chicago, so we moved here. So as far as experience goes, I really don't have experience in that particular field. My background is in the supply chain field. I'm a master planner at Motorola, and I was a production planner with General Motors Corporation. But I think that having a fresh point of view on, you know, on any type of council or assembly-type opposition really brings some, you know, fresh ideas to it, so I thought that coming down here, I would give a chance to give back to the community, and that's why I'm here.
Okay, anyone have any questions? Yes.
I'll ask you the same question.
I'm sorry.
I was going to say, I didn't think so.
Yeah. All right. I'm sorry.
Okay. Have you spoken with Liz Langenbach, the Parks and Rec Director, to find out what that position entails? Have you been to the Multi-Gen Center and toured it?
No.
Or any of the parks? Okay. Have you reviewed the fee schedule for the Parks and Rec Department?
No.
Okay. Just want to find out. Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else over here? Over here? Yes, go ahead.
In your application, it said veteran U.S. Army and stained glass.
Yes.
Would you ever consider being part of the Arts Commission?
I'm sorry, ma'am. I barely hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you consider being part of the Arts Commission with your stained glass background?
Yes, I would. I do. I'm a stained glass artist, and I own my own business, and I work out of my home. So I've been doing that for about 10 years, and I do appreciate the arts. And so, yes, I would consider that. That would be very, you know, very good as far as I'm concerned.
I think you would fit well.
You stole my question.
Oh. God, I'm sorry.
Anyone else?
Yes. Have you been able to attend any of our various community events, parades, festivals, things like that?
The parades, yes. Before the COVID started, yeah. And I'd like to see those continue because I think that really helps the community. I think as far as Apache Junction is concerned, I think it's really a beautiful area. I mean, Tempe is no comparison whatsoever. I mean, you come out here and you can look around, and you can just see the beauty everywhere. And, you know, we really love it.
Thank you.
No other questions? I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Wayne Standish.
You were hiding back there.
I was just sitting there, waiting my time. Okay. You all know me. I'm Wayne Standage, born and raised in Arizona, fifth generation. Several ancestors founded the Goldfield Ghost Town, found the mine back in the 1890s. As a five-year-old, I've been in and out of this area for all my life. I'm 70 now. And when my wife and I moved over here with our horses, we wanted to have them right here at the house with us. So we found a place. That's where they've been. I got busy working with Jeff Bell, and then he had me put in for the Parks and Rec, and that's the board I've been on ever since, since about 2006. I've worked with Liz Langenbach, Jeff Bell, and we've done a lot of nice things. I remember being there when we did Silly Mountain. And Tess, you remember the row we had with that meeting?
Yeah.
And also for... With Flatiron going in here, we're working on the Dog Park now. Liz is a very good leader for Parks and Rec, and I'd like to be reappointed for Parks and Rec. Also, I'm up for municipal property, and I put in for that back when John was mayor.
Long ago.
Long ago. And the reason I put in is nobody would step forward to volunteer.
Yep.
And that is one board that has to meet state law. So I've been on that one ever since, and I can thank Ed Barker for making me the chairman on that board. But that's where I kind of stand on that. I do have several degrees in criminal justice and another one in history of the Southwest and a minor in education. So I kept busy through my life. I worked for APS at Palaverty Nuclear Generating Station. On my days off, I was a sworn officer for Maricopa County Sheriff's. So I've watched this area totally change since, let's say, 1960, best I can remember. And so I'll leave it open to you now for any questions. You got something, Joel?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, Wayne, thank you for your long service to the boards. You certainly have been around for a long time, and it's much appreciated. In that experience and everything that you've been able to bring to the table with your fellow Board and Commission members so far, what else do you want to see brought to Apache Junction, especially in terms of Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec, I still got two projects I'd like to finish, which is areas for horsemen to park their trailers and ride the open space. We don't have... You can't go right from your house safely out to the open space still, even with the program that was brought in from ASU. The other thing is firearms and firearm safety. And those two issues I've talked with Liz about, and we'll try to see if we can get something done on that this time.
Thank you.
Anyone else over here? Anyone over here? Thank you, Wayne.
Okay. Thank you.
Good to see you.
Yeah. It's good to be up and around now.
Yeah. Yeah.
Michael Sutton.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Dr. Michael Sutton. I am semi-retired because I can't figure out which half is actually retired. I've lived here in Apache Junction for the last year, and during that time, I've developed a lot of relationships because I used to teach full-time in MBA programs and business programs and entrepreneurship programs. So I'm applying for the Industrial Development Authority. However, from what I'm learning this evening, it must be one of the most inactive and understated organization around. I have 35 years of business experience in Canada before I was invited in by McGill University to do my doctorate. I was 50 years old when I started. I was 57 when I graduated. I'm glad I didn't wait till I was 70. I can tell you it would have been quite an ordeal. I've been living in the States now for the last 20 years, teaching at Kent State, teaching in Salt Lake City, Westminster College, Boise State, along with three other online universities. I continue my coaching of entrepreneurs with the Arizona Commerce Authority, Arizona State University Center for Entrepreneurship, Gateway Community College Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship, and I'm developing a relationship now with the City of Superior, which is developing their own Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship. I have served on volunteer boards with cities in the past. At the City of Ottawa, Ontario, I sat on the Air and Water Pollution Subcommittee for three years. During that period of time, that was in the '80s, we developed the Blue Box Program, which now has gone across both Canada and the U.S., and it's all about the recycling of materials. So I led that particular initiative so we could do a cost-benefit analysis to make sure we could make money recycling. I've worked with the Mayor's Office in Salt Lake City in a strategic planning initiative. I've met with Janine Hannah-Soli here in the Economic Development Group and have also developed a relationship with Gateway Community College's workforce development. I'm very interested in seeing business capitalize on the growth here in Apache Junction. And so really, the only board or commission I could see where I might be qualified to help would be the Industrial Development Authority. But I have to ask you, what does it do? Because I can't find a bloody thing about it.
That's what it does.
That doesn't mean you get to back out of your application either.
I mean, I want to be actively involved...
Sure.
...in business development. I sit on as a volunteer with Pinel County in their criminal tracking system. I continue with my work with a number of different universities and commerce groups here in the greater Phoenix area. Gosh, what would it take to get areas of Apache Junction kind of off the ground in this area?
Money.
I'm seeing so much going on.
Just money.
Yeah.
You know? We used to have funding for it, and that kind of... The state took it away.
Well...
So since then, we haven't had a lot going on, but we've just also annexed all of this land to the south of us.
I'm familiar with the map and what's going on there.
So even though it has been dormant, that doesn't mean that it's planning on staying that way.
Well, being semi-retired, I do not want to retire into a group that doesn't do anything.
Sure.
If it is going to be active and going to pursue some significant strategic goals, for example, I'm being interviewed tomorrow by your economic development facilitator who's looking after the strategic plan as a potential stakeholder for this area. So I really want to see something kick ass and take names and get going here. So if I can be a resource to help do that, I would look forward to it. I'd embrace any questions you might have.
Your Honor?
Yes?
Not so much a question, just a suggestion because I think you have a phenomenal background and great experience. I would recommend reaching out to the Penal County Schools' office, the Penal County School Superintendent. On November 5th, they're getting ready to have their Business and Education Summit, and this is a lot of what your background is really focused on, working with the business community and the educational community and bringing the two together and figuring out how they can partner and work toward... You know, work together through not only our middle schools and high schools, but into the secondary level with our Central Arizona Community College as well. So they're always looking for people to help with that, so please reach out to them.
Thank you. Good suggestion.
Anyone else over here? Yes?
I have the same comment like Braden did. Not so much any questions, but instead of limiting yourself to these few boards and commissions, some of which never meet, hardly, have you thought about going over and speaking with Larry Kirsch, the Director of Development Services? Because with what Gail just said, with the new growth coming, that's in the next 10 to 20 years, that whole area south of the US 60 is going to be developed. And, you know, I don't know if you could offer your services what they could use, but I'd suggest you go talk to Larry. It's K.I... How is it?
R.C.H.
K.I.R.C.H.? Yeah.
I don't know either.
In Development Services.
Be glad to do that. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks a lot.
And Verna Walters.
You have the most patience.
That goes with our last names. Mine's Wilson, so mine's always last as well, so I sympathize with you very strongly. And unfortunately, my first name is also Walter, so I got hit both times.
Mayor Wilson and council, my name is Vera Walters, and I am on the Library Board, have been for three years, and I would definitely like to continue. I have a master's degree in English, not that that's directly the experience that I'm bringing to the board. I do a lot of volunteer work in the area, and I believe strongly in giving back to my community. The position I have on the board is pretty easy because, one, we have the greatest library around, as well as the greatest Parks and Rec, I might add, and we have the best library director I've ever seen. Someone with that kind of innovation and go-get-'em, new ideas, we can't... I can't offer anything because she comes up with it first every time. It is a pleasure to work on the Library Board. I am very active in the library. I've already always been an avid library user. I was glad when they hired Vicki to do some programming, and I've given several programs in that large room before the COVID happened. You might have seen my debut on television when I did the little blurb on their Facebook page about the library, and that little Megan did such a good job on getting me so I wasn't so nervous. And always advertising or putting out there the new things that the library has to offer. I hope you've all seen the storyboard at Flatiron Park, and we have so many facilities in the library. I want to be there. So I ask you to seriously consider my application to continue on the board. I see. Anything else? Do you have any questions?
Pam, did you bribe your Library Board members to say good things? Come on now.
She doesn't have to. And we miss you on the board.
Thank you. I miss you all.
Anyone over here have a question? Well, thank you very much. You have the privilege...
He seems disappointed.
I waited two hours, and you don't have a question. Thank you.
But you get the privilege of hearing...
You were so thorough.
You get the privilege of hearing me say, "I adjourn this meeting." Thank you.
Actually, Your Honor, I had a couple comments, if I may.
Wait a minute.
I was...
Re-adjourn.
Okay. I stopped the adjournment.
Yeah. I just had a few comments, and I had a couple of things that I just wanted to ask in relation to the application and application process. First, I just wanted to say, this is my eighth time doing these interviews, and I am absolutely blown out of the water with the applicants. I just... We get great applicants every year, but this interview process has been an eye-opener and just absolutely amazing to see the people that love this community, that want to be involved in this community, that have gone from other places intentionally to come here and be a part of this community. It's amazing. I am just... And I see... It's so funny that I believe your name was Sarah, commenting about wanting to be, you know, on the council, because right before you said that, I thought, there are so many people here that I see as up-and-coming leaders at some point that are probably going to be here, and so I just think that's awesome. When we're talking about... I just wanted to just share some thoughts that I had with the fellow council members. When we talk about in our interviews, experience, what experience people have, when... Several of us had served on boards before getting on council. It's not too common for people to get on the council without serving on boards. A lot of us didn't necessarily have experience, but what we had was interest and drive to be a part of the community and try to serve the community. And there's not necess... You know, there's some things in our backgrounds that might be beneficial to serve on boards. But I just wanted to share, just when you hear how everybody had nothing but good things to say about this community and just the love for the community and the positivity here and how they just really had a drive to serve, I think that's huge. I really think that's a huge factor. I think backgrounds are great. I don't know that we've ever had some of the experience that we've seen with some of these applicants. Obviously, the Citizens Leadership Academy is always an important thing. It gives you an idea of kind of what you're getting into, how the city government works. Planning and zoning is a great stepping stone for council. It always comes up frequently for people that are considering it. It's a great stepping stone to see if you're really interested in this other side of it. And it's a difficult decision as we start appointing people, but when we look at... We look at incumbents, and we have new applicants, and where the openings are, for me on a personal level, unless... When we talk about, um, in our interviews, experience, um, what experience people have, when, several of us had served on, uh, boards before getting on council. It's not too, not too common for, uh, people to get on the council without serving on boards. A lot of us didn't necessarily have experience, but what we had was interest and drive to be a part of the community, um, and try to serve the community. And there's not necess, you know, there's some, there's some things that in our backgrounds that might, uh, be beneficial to serve on boards. Um, but I just wanted to share, just, when you hear how, how everybody had nothing but good things to say about this community, and just the love for the community and the positivity here, and how they just really had a drive to serve, um, I think that's huge. Yeah, I, I really think that's a huge factor. Um, I think backgrounds are great. We, I don't know that we've ever had some of the experience that we've seen with some of these applicants. Obviously, the Citizens Leadership Academy is always a, uh, an important thing. It gives you an idea of, um, kinda what you're getting into, how the city government works. Uh, planning and zoning is a great stepping stone for council. Um, it always comes up, um, uh, frequently for people that are considering it. It's a great stepping stone to see if you're really, uh, interested in this, this other side of it. And it's a difficult decision as we start appointing people. But when we look at, um, we look at incumbents and we have new applicants, and, and where the openings are, um, for me on a personal level, unless there's an issue or a lot of absences, it would be really difficult to pull somebody off of a board, really. If they're interested and they're serving, and they're getting involved, and, and, and they're engaged in the meetings, um, and they're attending the meetings, it would be kinda difficult to, to, to pull somebody on some of those boards and, and replace them with new applicants. But we, we always ask the new applicants, if you don't get it, don't take it personal and keep trying. We'll find a place for you. There's a, there was a few good suggestions here about getting, maybe the police department needs volunteers. The, you know, we can always use interns in, uh, the Planning and Developing, uh, Department. And so I just, I just wanted to share some of those thoughts, but also in the application process, one of the things that I looked at, a question, and I have no idea where this question came from. Uh, "Do you have any past or current legal disputes with the city? Inclusive of any code compliance notices of violations, civil or criminal, criminal municipal or superior court actions, claim for damages, lawsuits, uh, adjudicated adverse judgments, or unsatisfying liens?" I don't know how in the hell that question became part of this applicant process. I don't know if we discussed it and came to a consensus, but quite frankly, on a personal level, I don't think it belongs here. Because if we're gonna start asking this, are we gonna start asking, "Did you run a red light? Do you have a ticket here?" You know, "Have you had a dog issue with your dog not getting licensed or something?" So I would like to know where that question came from, because I never remembered any previous packets, uh, and why in the world we would ever wanna ask that question? And if that is, in fact, the consensus of the council.
Your Honor, I know back at the retreat in June, this was not something on the agenda, or was not on the, um, discussion. I actually think maybe Jennifer can help us out a little bit on that, 'cause I think it was last year's process when we talked about it, but I'm not sure how it actually got into the packet. And it's certainly something we can take off.
I have been looking through the past council agendas and minutes, looking for the discussion, because I do recall the discussion, um, that council wanted that question. I just have not found it yet in the minutes. I haven't had a whole lot of time to search. I will continue. Um, I believe the question then was added when Jill was deputy, um, because I didn't know that the application had been modified. But I believe it was one of council's comments that they wanted the question.
There was a discussion, I just don't know when it was, Jennifer. We can, we'll keep looking in the minutes, and we'll keep looking. But I, I, I know it was, it wasn't at the retreat recently in June. The process that you have tonight was an outcome of outgrowth of some of the discussion a year ago and that retreat. And I wanna give kudos to Matt and Jennifer for really working together to put this all in one way. Now, specifically to that question, we'll have to keep researching.
I'd like to know if it's a consensus of the council to have that in this, in this interview. I, I, if we're gonna ask this question, how far is it gonna go, is my question to my fellow council members. Are we gonna, where does it begin and where does it end as far as digging into people's backgrounds? We gonna do background checks for board, board members?
Your Honor, if, if I can add to that at least, um, I agree with council member Izzy, or I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Izzy. Um, I, I think, first of all, I, I don't think it's pertinent information to deciding if we, uh, we appoint somebody to a board or commission, seeing as, uh, it's not a disqualifying factor to be on a board or commission. Um, second of all, I, I think it goes down a very dangerous path, because, quite frankly, it's not the public's business to know if there's an open code case going on, uh, to one of those members, or if there's a pending lawsuit. Um, there's, especially in terms of a pending lawsuit of any kind, um, there are things that obviously council members can't discuss. Um, you heard a couple things tonight where if, you know, uh, an example of a member being on a board where they have to accuse themselves, there's those opportunities, the same as, as we would have here. Um, I, I'm not a fan of that question. It, it struck me out as well, and, and I've been questioning how that got into the, uh, line of questions as well. I, I definitely think that, in general, in terms of the board and commission process, we need to have a, a bigger conversation about revamping some things and, and looking at how we go through this process. And I know we haven't been able to do that, um, yet since the, the board retreat. And that is something that I, I would like to see done before we start appointing boards and commissions by this time next year. I'll leave it at that for now.
Yes.
I just wanna thank all of the applicants for applying for these boards and commissions. Um, this city would be hard-pressed to operate without all of the volunteers that we have. But don't limit yourself to just these boards and commissions, as I recommended to somebody about, you know, go talk to Planning and Development and see if they can use your services. Um, I was a volunteer with the, uh, Police Department for eighteen years. Um, I, I re-shelved books, 'cause I knew the Dewey Decimal System with the library, you know? It's still used. And, uh, so, you know, if there's something that you have an interest in, you, you don't have to wait and apply to boards and commissions.